Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the city council on January 3rd, 2022 at 3:00 PM. Due to public health concerns, this meeting will be held remotely. You may access the meeting by dialing 253-215-8782 and entering the meeting ID 932-1605-6382 or through Zoom at the link that's provided at the top of the agenda. And I will turn it over to Josh for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lykanz.
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg is absent and excused. There's no objection from council. Councilmember Storset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
We have five councilmembers present.
Okay. So we are on new business one, filling a vacancy on the city council. And again, I will turn that over to our interim city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon and welcome to our new council for 2022. So the purpose for this agenda bill is to direct staff to begin the process of recruiting candidates to fill the vacancy on city council. This vacancy occurred on December 31st at midnight when Councilmember Markley officially became Mayor Markley. I think most of you or all of you were in attendance at the December 13th meeting where we went over the procedure and process for how council has established a policy to fill this vacancy. So the purpose of this agenda item is to officially direct the mayor and staff to go forward with the policy and start recruiting candidates. Attached to the agenda bill, I think the last two pages, there's a sample of the announcement that we'll put out as a press release and in the newspaper. Just to officially make people aware that there's a vacancy. And there's also a copy of the application that we'll give out to people to fill out. That application will actually be a web form on our website, so it won't look like that, but it will substantially the same questions will be there and people can just go online and fill it out and quick submit. And that's how we'll accept the applications. The plan is to keep the applications open until Friday, January 14th. At that point, we'll close the applications. I'll get them all collated and send them out to you all. And then on Tuesday, January 18th, we'll have everyone come in and interview them. So if you have questions about the process, I can answer those now. You want to discuss about your thoughts on the process? And if you want to see revisions or changes made to it, this is the time to do that. Here for any questions you have.
Is there any initial screening that's done prior to this? Or do we, is everyone that apply have the opportunity to interview?
So the screening process, there won't be a screening process other than the application will ask them to affirm that they are city residents, that they've been city residents for a full year and they're registered to vote. Those are the only qualifications. So what will happen is the way the policy is written is that there's more than six candidates than when council convenes do the interviews. They can decide at that time if they want to interview everyone or if they want to filter it down to six candidates or fewer.
Josh, could you let Daniel in as a participant?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I see him there now.
Thank you. From now on, I'll use the hand raising rather than just jumping out there with my questions. Apologies.
Well, and I forgot to mention the raising hand and all of that stuff, so I apologize for that. Yes, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So sorry. The prospect of appointing a new council member is an important responsibility I don't take lightly. I believe a council member, as my job is to vote for policies that keep Gig Harbor healthy, safe, and functioning into the future. This creates a quality of life that our citizens have come to expect. Keeping our employees healthy keeps our cities functioning. Healthy citizens are good shoppers for our businesses. To prospective candidates, I will be looking forward to hearing your views on health, safety, functioning. I am especially interested to know your views on growth, science, COVID, and vaccinations. So I'm going to go ahead and propose a motion. I move to direct the mayor to begin the council member appointment process as outlined in administrative policy A-13-01.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, council comments and deliberation. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. I'll lower my hand. Item A7, Appointment Process. Could you let us know when you would like our questions submitted to you? By which date?
Josh, do you have that answer?
I don't have an answer for that. I'll talk to Mayor Markley over the next couple of days and we'll send out an email and ask you for those.
Okay, good.
And I would expect that those questions should be in a week before the meeting, just so we have time to put it all together, but we'll give you the exact date via email.
And if you have any questions on our questions, you'll get back with us so we can maybe explain them or if we have to rephrase them. Then my next question is B5. Specifically, the council may elect not to interview all the applicants. How would that happen? We'd have to get everybody together again to say, okay, we all agree to, let's say we get 15 applicants, just as a hypothetical point, and we only wanted to interview five for some reason. How how does that happen exactly? Because it sounds like we'd want all of the members of the council available. Because some people may say, no, I want, I really want to interview that person. Others may say, no, I don't want to. So maybe you could kind of clarify that. I'm not sure how that goes.
That would need to occur at the interview meeting. So at the point where you decide that you're going to pare down the list of interview candidates, those interview candidates will be at the meeting and they'll be prepared to be interviewed. So it may create a situation where someone comes in to be interviewed and you decide at the meeting that you're not going to interview them. So that would have to happen at a council meeting and the only option, opportunity to do that would be at the interview meeting itself.
Okay. All right, hopefully we won't have too many that we can interview them all. And then I did have some questions on the application, but I'll cede my time to Councilmember Lykanz.
Actually, Councilmember Denson had her hand up first, so we'll go with Councilmember.
Sorry.
You're good. Are you, are you unmuted?
Sorry, took me a second. Well, Councilmember Henderson made me think of something with the submission of our questions. I imagine that some of us are going to have questions that are very similar, like a number of us might ask a similar question about growth or, for example. So how are we going to handle that? Because I know we want the broadest diversity of questions, but many of us may have our top question is growth. Any ideas?
So that's why we want them at least a week in advance. That way, if we get the same question in essence from two or three council members, we can say, all right, we're going to give that question to Councilmember Denson and then we contact the two other council members and say, your question is being asked by Councilmember Denson. Would you like to submit another one?
That's wonderful. Okay. And then my other question, I hate to even say this, but do you think we should ask for proof of residency as an attachment to this application?
What do you think, Josh?
So the proof of residency is that's something that we can vet a little bit from the backend because we have access to the voter registration rolls. So one of the qualifications is you have to be a registered voter. We have access to all that information from Pierce County. But really, this is the same process as if someone was filing for election and running for election and there is no valid verification of address for candidates that are running for office either. It's there. We take them at their word when they file on with the Pierce County Auditor. So we can do a little bit of vetting and make sure, but we're really kind of limited to taking them at their word on this.
Yeah. Councilmember Lykanz.
Lower. Okay, unmuted. So I have a question on the application for the city council vacancy. When we were running for office, we were limited to the amount of words that we could respond to a given area in order to be succinct and to the point with what we think's most important. I'm wondering if in the questions, it could be similar to somewhat of a statement limiting to, let's say, I know Pierce County local offices, it's 200 words or something to the sort so that we're not reading volumes of CVs and things like that in case we get a lot of applicants just for time management. And then my second question is one of the things when you're running is you fill out all of your financial disclosures, your disclosures. Can we ask as a part of the application if there's a perceived or actual conflict of interest that they anticipate in the process? I don't know of anybody that has those type things, but those were things that we were asked when we were running and something that people may want to know.
Yeah, I think that's, that's something that would be appropriate to ask in the interview. I don't know how to screen for conflict of interest with the application.
Okay.
Let me take a look into that a little bit more. I think I have not looked into this one either, but I think that anyone that we appoint would still be subject to the same Public Disclosure Commission requirements that you are. So that part should be covered once they're appointed. But I should look into that one a little bit more because I don't have that answer off the top of my head right now.
Okay, great.
As far, as far as limiting the response to questions, I don't think I have that capability to do that with our pretty basic web application form. I think it's just an open text box. I can take a look at that and see if I can pose some similar restrictions, but I don't think that's an option for me.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Josh, do they still submit a letter of interest, which kind of is more like a statement that's attached to the application where they can write like a one-page letter of interest saying why they're, why they want to run and or why they would like to be appointed?
Yes, that is part of the announcement that I'm, that I have attached to this agenda bill. And that'll be part of what we send out. They'll fill out the form and then the form itself will have a box that they have to click to upload their letter of interest. So that will be part of the application.
Great, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Along those same lines, all of us that ran had to put in that Pierce County voter pamphlet bio. I'd really like to see that and with the same word limitations, if they, if that's their letter of interest, that would be great. I think I think it combines a lot of stuff in a short amount of time might help us weed through some of this and it, we all had to do it. So this isn't asking anybody anything that we didn't have to do. And I think it would be a good introduction to what they stand for. So I, I think that would be, and it's, it's on the website. You can see it. You know, it tells you how many words you can do. I think that would be wise.
Yeah, let me, I think I can take, I think I can take that and put that into the requirements for the letter of interest.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let me see if I can figure out how to do that.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. I hope I did that right. Did I do that right, Josh?
I think when you say all in favor say aye is what they were waiting for you to say.
Oh, I forgot the say aye part.
They didn't know what to say.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Okay, we're moving on to item number two, suspending city council standing committee meetings and turning it back to Josh.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is our second item for the meeting today, and this is a suggestion that's coming from Mayor Markley and it's always supported by most of city staff that we've talked to about it. Currently, the city council operates on a standing committee structure. We have five standing city council committees. Each committee has three council members and the mayor is a ex-officio member of each committee. Some of the committees meet monthly, some meet every two months or every three months. But this proposal here, the purpose is to direct staff to suspend all council committee meetings, bring the matters to the full city council for consideration. The advantages to making this change, we feel is that the information that's provided in the council committee meetings is information that is really valuable to all council members. And we find very often when we're holding our committee meetings as staff that were subsequently asked to provide the same information to the council members that weren't able to be present at the meetings to get them up to speed later, whether that's in conversations or in study sessions or for council meetings. With this council having three new council members and soon to be four new council members, I think the feeling is that this would be very advantageous to make sure that everyone gets the same information and is on the same page. At least for the proposed six-month period. And then at that point, we could check in and see what people's feelings are about going back to the committees or continuing with the study sessions or council at the whole, I think is how some people refer to it. So this proposal would allow us to move forward with that and just start doing the regular study sessions. We proposed that those would happen at 3:00 on the Thursdays immediately following each regular council meeting. So that would be two Thursdays a month from 3:00 till 5:00 o'clock or so, depending on how much information we have to get through. That is the proposal. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I do have some questions. I think the first one is I kind of like the idea. I've been mulling it over and, and there's some benefits of it. I see some drawbacks as well. I guess my first question is, are all committees currently that are staffed with the existing council members, are they? I don't want to say disbanded, but are they like they don't exist anymore if we do this or would they stay? That would be my first question.
So to answer that question, the committees right now are not filled. So when the council expired at the end of the year, all of the committee assignments were dropped.
Okay.
City's municipal code says that we fill the committees at the second regular meeting in January. So if you went forward with the committees, that's when we would choose who's going to be on which committee.
Okay. And then my, my last question, at least for now, is under suggested motion, we're talking about suspending scheduling of the city meetings. And then that last sentence said the city council shall appoint committees to conduct interviews for vacancies that may arise on the city's various advisory bodies. It seems out of place or is that put in there because of the fact that if we are disbanding or if we're not holding individual committee meetings, that something won't get done? It just seemed like, it's not that I disagree with that last sentence. It seems like out of place.
One of the committee, one of the committees we have is the Board and Commission Candidate Review Committee.
Okay.
That committee's job is to interview any, anyone who applies for a vacancy on our advisory board.
Such as the Parks Commission, which has one vacancy right now, Councilmember.
Yes, please. Okay.
Yeah, there would, there will be vacancies that occur in the next six-month period. So we just need to have some kind of a committee of council members who can conduct those interviews.
Okay, I got it. Thanks.
And that's really the only statutory code requirement that the committees have that they need to fulfill. Everything else can happen at the study session or council level. I mean, without the committee.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So in 2018, when I first came on the council, I was quite excited to do committees at the whole and, and we did committees at the whole probably for about six or nine months. And we found out that we were not getting as much information because of the limited time restraints on this. I am very much in favor of getting our new council and every council member as much detailed information as possible in order to make good, in order to make good decisions. I'm concerned that two meetings a month is not enough. So I fully support council meetings at the whole. I'd like to see us block out every Thursday afternoon. And if they're not needed, then we don't have them, but at least we would know that we have all blocked out that time on Thursday afternoons. And so, so none of us schedule anything else for that Thursday afternoon. And if it's needed, then we'll have a meeting. And if it's not needed, then we won't have a meeting. But, but I'm concerned that for, four hours a month to, especially for new council members to get up to speed on, on what has happened before they came on board. And also for us returning council members to, to have an opportunity to really go in depth and for all council members returning and new to go in depth on current things. So I'm just concerned that four hours, four hours a month is not enough. I'd like to see us schedule every Thursday afternoon at 3:00. Don't know if anybody cares about that. Another way to do that would maybe be to have meetings at 2:00 instead of 3:00. That might give us more time if needed. But I'm, I'm concerned about four hours a month is not enough time for detail information.
Is there council support for that or Councilmember Lykanz?
I think so. My question is, are we still going to be having study sessions outside of those Thursday meetings? Or would these also replace the study session that happens? I think I saw it supposed to happen on the third Monday in the, in the code of every month. And is there a plan for that?
So the, the city, the municipal code currently provides, like you said, for a study session on the third Monday of each month. At 5:30, the same time as our council meetings, and we have never actually followed that. So one of the things, once we get kind of probably six months in, when we figure out what, what it is that works for us, we probably will just take that out of the code. I don't, I think that there could be options for having additional study sessions besides the two Thursdays that we're setting here. But I think the intent is, is that the study sessions that we've had in the past would be included and rolled into these meetings as well.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Denson.
I have two things. One is a little bit off topic and then I'll return to the topic that Councilmember Wook brought up. But I was wondering who was going to chair these, these meetings, since typically council committees are chaired by a council member. And I had a suggestion that maybe we alternate by seniority so that all council members get the experience, you know, every, I guess, every six or seven weeks of chairing one of these committees. So I want to see what people thought of that. And then kind of going back to the question of time, I was hoping interim city clerk, Mr. Stecker, could explain a little bit how the committee meetings that we've been having would function or have a little bit different roles than a study session. Because like the committee meetings that we're having now, I believe, consist of a staff report, questions, and then deliberation and some sort of voting on a recommendation to the council. But that would be different if we're all there, because I would think the deliberation and voting would be more appropriate to happen at a council meeting. So maybe, Josh, would you mind kind of explaining how these will look a little bit different or not?
Yeah, so to answer your first question about having the alternating chairs, just to address that one first, that would not be an option for the study sessions because these would be officially council meetings and by, by state law, but the mayor is the chair of the city council. So there could be some informal delegation there, but the mayor would still be the chair of these meetings. As far as the second comment that you had, Councilmember Denson, I think that sums it up pretty well. What would happen at study sessions is instead of having a vote and a formal recommendation, we would have a, it would be an opportunity for council to get formal direction to staff. So your, your motions and, and we probably would encourage you to, to make motions like you're doing at this meeting today in study session would just be to move to direct staff to do X, Y, and Z so that we have very clear concise direction. And we know we have the support of a forum of council rather than two or three committee members, which may not represent a forum of council. So that would, that would be, I think, the key difference between a study session and a committee meeting. Hopefully that answers your question.
Councilmember Storset. You're on mute.
Sorry, I thought the spacebar was going to take care of that. Yeah, so great comments. Appreciate hearing from everybody on this one. Wish Lee was on as well to give some, some guidance with his experience and what that's been. While I do like the idea of, of this, you know, being involved in all of the different committees because I think there's a lot of transparency in that. I think it's a great onboarding for new council members. I would say that I am concerned about the amount of time and, you know, opening that up broader to, you know, every Thursday. Not against it. I like the Jenny that you put out there that we could remove the, the weekly if we, we find that helpful. I know for myself, scheduling wise, I have to, you know, balance like many of us do, work schedules and, and life. So the more that we have, you know, this structured and laid out, I think is, is going to be very helpful. And I love meetings, don't get me wrong, but I feel like when you hold tight to an agenda and you know the amount of time that you have, that you get to the things that matter the most. And I don't, I just don't want to be, because we have time or we're making it available necessarily that that's the means. The means is to get, you know, our questions answered, have a full understanding of, you know, decisions and issues at hand. So I guess in my thoughts there is that I, I would be okay with a weekly scheduling, but looking at that and talking about it, like at least bringing it up as a question every two weeks of, do we feel like this is adequate? Could we shift it back? Just want to respect everyone's time. Thanks.
Great. And I did speak with Councilmember Rothenberg last week. He asked me to pass on his, his opinion on this issue. He is for council of the whole. So he wanted you guys to know that. And that's, that's all he wanted me to say is that he was, if you were here, he would vote for that. So that was his, that was his response. Councilmember Henderson. Oh, you're on mute.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've been pondering this issue too of either having enough time or not having enough time. And I, thanks, Councilmember Storset for bringing that up. I guess what we could do is try for the two-hour every two weeks and then I mean, if we're going to invest in from a three to five, then we probably could also invest in a two to five twice. I think instead of having a mess of meetings that are shorter, we may try to have them that are a little bit longer. But I would say let's try two hours, see how staff, if they think that they're getting the point across and if we, the city council, think that the point's getting across, I, I definitely would want to hear from staff if they felt like it's just not enough time to get stuff done, that we're leaving things on the table. My, you know, I have a lot of meetings under my belt too, and the, the more the mayor is not always the best. I'd rather have a slightly longer meeting, get more done because everybody's there versus having to say, okay, we're going to have another one next week.
And I will speak on behalf of staff on that. I think it's six of one, half a dozen of the other. If we polled them, they would say a couple hours worth of meeting. Some of them would say it would be fine every week versus three hours every other week. But I think the majority would say three hours every other week would work better. On top of that, with understanding that people have commitments and all that sort of thing, if a council member cannot make it to a study session, staff will certainly find some time to brief that council member on what was discussed. Make sure that they're totally up to speed with the issues. So when it does come to the full council, they'll know what was discussed. Quite frankly, rather than having you sit and listen three hours to a meeting, I think staff can give you a quick briefing in a half an hour to an hour.
Thank you, Tony. Councilmember Denson.
Yeah, I would just like to lend my support to the, the option of having a slightly longer meeting every other week than having a meeting scheduled every week. Knowing that we can always schedule more meetings because we do that all the time.
We're very good at that.
We will. But it's easier for me personally to block three hours than to block two hours every week. That would be, that would be a challenge for me. I'm just going to be honest.
Sure, sure. Councilmember Wook.
So then do, I would like to see this amended then for Thursdays immediately following each regular council meeting of each month at 2:00 PM. So to begin at 2:00 PM, not 3:00 PM, I realize that there is no motion on the table. So So um procedurally rise, do I need to make an emotion, do I need to make a motion and state the amendment at the same time? Do we need to have a motion in a second? Uh, how does this happen? I mean, I hear some support for the three hour meeting, so how does that happen?
So Councilmember Luke, you can just make the motion to say what you want to say initially, and there's no amendment needed. So just read the suggested motion with the new time and that, that will be sufficient.
Thank you. I move to direct the mayor to suspend scheduling of all city council committee meetings through June twenty twenty-two and to schedule regular city council study sessions for the Thursdays immediately following each regular city council meeting of each month at two P M. The city council shall appoint an ad hoc committees or ad hoc committees to conduct interviews for vacancies that may arise on the city's various advisory bodies.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second, but Councilmember Lykins. Any other council discussion? Council, uh, Councilmember Luke, your hand is still, nope. Anyone else have anything they want to add? Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye, no, sorry, aye. Just hit the wrong button. Sorry, my mouth stayed on my hand. Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Five, right, five? Counting all of you. Councilmember Denson.
Sorry, I just had a question because I was a little confused, I think, starting off. And maybe, uh, Mr. Stecker can explain, when we were doing councils of the whole before, that's different than what we're doing now, right? Councils of the whole are different than study sessions, correct?
They, no, they're, they're functionally the same thing. Uh, for technical purposes, we're going to call them study sessions. Um, some people refer to it as council of the whole, but it's the same thing. And really technically speaking, a council meeting is a council meeting, is a council meeting from O P M A standpoint. So they're all just council meetings, but um, our council guidelines, the guidelines document that we adopted a couple of years ago has an actual definition for study session, which just basically says you're going to meet and maybe give direction to staff. And so that's what these will be. They'll just meet that definition in our council guidelines.
So it's because we're, we have all the council members, because I I thought, and maybe I'm just remembering this incorrectly, but I thought that Councilmember Frannich chaired our council of the whole meetings. Am I remembering?
No, I don't, I don't think that.
Then never mind.
No problem.
You might be remembering the um, Transportation Benefit District, because when we have those meetings, Franch was the chairman of those.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So with our new um, extension of this meeting, the Thursdays immediately following the regular city council meetings, do we still propose a study session meeting between those weeks?
I don't think so.
Only if it was needed or if there was an executive session that popped up, but otherwise, it would strictly be the Thursday following each council meeting from two to five.
Okay, right, good.
And staff has made themselves available to talk to anyone on a deeper level outside of those meetings. If you want some additional information or communication, um, they're ready to assist in in any way. Um, as is Tom, or Tony and myself, you know, we're available as well. So, um, we just wanted to I I thank you, you know, for um, considering this idea. It was just, it was helpful when us three came on the council, you know, twenty twenty, and I thought it might be helpful again, especially with four brand new council people coming on. So I think it'll be good. And then we'll revisit this, I think, what is it, June, end of June? Josh, and see if we like how it's going or want to go back to committees, so. Um, so Josh, being that this is a, oh, Councilmember Luke.
I was just going to ask a different subject. Uh, I think we're due to get a a real, a full-time city clerk and uh and we're going to go out for a, for um, for a, a new um interim city clerk or assistant city clerk is do we have a schedule for when we're going to be applying for those things?
Would you like to answer that, Tony?
I'll let you, Your Honor.
Um, so I am, I've already started the process with Tony and Camille to promote Josh to city clerk and allow him to immediately hire an assistant. So we are working on that process and hopefully that will be happening very soon.
Good. Congratulations, Josh.
Thank you. Yep, I'm looking forward to that.
We are too. Thank you so much.
Totally.
Um, being that this is a special meeting, I don't believe there's public comment unless council would like to open it for public comment, but uh, is there any council members that would like to do that, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Your, Your Honor, I have one quick thing I want to and that's with regards to the um, event that we are having with uh with Senator Randall on Thursday at the Y at four P M. Um, we asked council members who wanted to go, and we've limited it to three, because if it was four, we would be then having a council meeting and trying to record that and simultaneously put out an audio uh, for folks to hear what's going on would be technically impossible for us, even if we could do it, getting it set up now would be just very, very difficult. Um, the purpose of this meeting is to talk to Senator Randall about the proposed sports complex. And in particular, for her to hear from certain members of the community and from the council uh, about the support that we have for this particular pro- uh, project. The various um, and called the lead people from some of the sports leagues that would really benefit from the use of these fields have been invited to be at this meeting. Um, it was not intended to be a public meeting, but we did put it out on our Facebook page. And several people have said that they plan to show up, and that's fine. If they do, uh, we'll make sure that they have an opportunity to uh, make their feelings known. Uh, but this is really intended for us to make sure that Senator Randall understands how much support there is in the community for this project.
Yes. Councilmember Storset.
My hand is up actually for an unrelated topic, so if there's other comments to the subject.
Councilmember Luke, related to this topic?
Yes, thank you. So I I did hear that the first or that three council members will be allowed to attend this meeting. I I, I replied that I would like to go. So how will we, when will we find out who's allowed to attend this meeting?
Well, I will tell you right now, it is you, Councilmember Luke, uh, Councilmember help me, Henderson and Storset, correct, Josh?
Uh, Councilmember Denson and
Denson, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I had also requested to go as well.
Yes, so it is you and Councilmember Luke and Councilmember Denson.
Yes.
Oh.
And there will be, uh, we'll, we'll brief every, the whole council on how that open talk goes. There will be a, a full briefing on that. Um, I don't know, maybe during the city minister to report or mayor's report at the January tenth meeting, maybe we can
We can talk about how that meeting went, but we can also give council a full briefing of where we're at with all aspects of the sports complex at an upcoming meeting, possibly the twenty-fourth or the uh, first meeting in February.
Yes. Um, okay, Councilmembers, start, start that.
Yes, thank you. So um, the other uh, question or comment that I had uh, is the what is the likelihood that we could uh, have city council, does it need cell phones for city council? I received my laptop today during our hail and snowstorm, but um, would also like to get a, a separate phone that I can use for city matters, uh, that's separate from my, my professional and private lines, I guess.
Um, I have no problem with that. Josh, Tony, thoughts?
Josh, go ahead.
I, I think that's a possibility. I think the only requirement to do that is just to have council direct that we get phones for them. Um, yeah, I think we have the capacity for it. It's just a uh, whether or not council wants that to be their
And, and this is, this is one of those kind of informal things. If unless a council member objects and wants to have a full discussion on this, I think we just make it in the policy of the city that council members who want a city issued phone can have one.
Yeah, you certainly don't have to, but if you would like one, we have um, the budgetary means to do that. And I know for certain people's work schedules, they have to keep their um, business separate from um, city council and personal separate from business. So this would, if this will enable you to do that and function better and and how you need to as a council person, then that's good with me.
Great, thank you.
So
Daniel popped on. Daniel Kenny, our city attorney.
Uh, first of all, good to see you all. I I was just going to make a very quick comment. I didn't realize I'd get called on so quickly there. Um, just a reminder that anything that you do um, for city business, whether it's on a city phone or a personal device is subject to um, to the Public Records Act. And so um, you can choose how you want to uh, navigate, you know, which phone to use and whatnot, but just do keep that in mind that text messages, emails sent and received on a phone, uh, phone logs and things like that. If it's on a personal device, it could still be part of a Public Records Act um, uh, search uh, for, for disclosures, disclosure. So just wanted to, in case that sways anybody on how they'd like to conduct their business.
You, you read my mind, Daniel. I was about to say that as well.
We, we have policies for cellphone use that will apply to council if they get uh, their cell phones and that. Well, I think that's detailed in the policy as well. So we'll make sure anyone that gets the phone receives a copy of that too.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming these would be Android phones.
Uh, currently, the city phone that I have is a iPhone, but I think we have the ability to do Androids as well.
Yeah, I'd like an iPhone instead.
Councilmember Storset, do you have a choice?
Oh, definitely an iPhone, please. Thank you.
Okay, I will get with I T, or Josh can let I T know that the, the two of you want a city issue phone. Uh, Councilmember Lykins wants one too.
Yeah.
That makes three.
iPhone would be great. Thanks.
Okay.
I bet you all be Android user. I hope, I hope my phone's in Android, because I don't know how to use iPhones.
I've had both, and I prefer iPhone.
Yep. I might like iPhone better and then convince my husband we need to switch. I don't know. We'll see. We'll see how it goes. Um, any other, any other questions, comments? City clerk.
Yeah, just a couple of housekeeping notes. Um, for our meetings going forward, I've talked to Mayor Markley, and we're going to try a couple of different things procedurally. Um, one of them, we just started with this, this meeting and all, all she will defer to me and I will call the role for council at the meetings. Um, and then the other thing that we're going to try doing is when we have public comment during our regular meetings, um, I'm going to run that myself from here. So when it's public comment time, the mayor will open the public comment, and then I'll take it from there, and I will I will read any written comments that come in, and I will call on any people that are waiting out in the Zoom lobby with their hand raised, and I'll give them the instructions. And so we can take that off her plate for the meetings. Um, just, just uh, something to notice going forward. The other thing that you may notice if you've been following our meetings is we're rolling out a new uh, template for an agenda bill. Um, we'll probably see that at the January tenth. It's going to be similar to what you saw in this packet here. Um, so just be watching for that. Hopefully that'll make it a little clearer and more streamlined for you going forward.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Josh, um, will we get a, be able to glance at the revised um application form for the city council vacancy before it goes out?
Uh, I will actually just post that live, and I'll send you the link when it's live.
Okay.
At this point, I probably won't take any more input from council on it, because once this meeting's adjourned, I would need to have support from full council to make any changes to it. Um, there may be some administrative changes that I need to make to it, so I may not look verbatim exactly like you've seen it, but um, I will try to be faithful to what, what you've requested here.
Okay, um, I I just noted that I think it was Gig Harbor Now put the link in which some people may be filling out an older form just in case.
Well, it doesn't exist yet, so I don't know what they posted, but
Okay, yeah.
No application yet, so I'm hoping I can roll that out tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Depending on what hiccups I run into, it may be Wednesday.
Got it.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
First meeting.